Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the November 21st, 2024, City Council Meeting for the five-time winner of the Voice of the People Awards. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Whoop.
Mr. Misskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Wasely?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. I'll come down front. We have the Chamber President here to accept it. Okay, whereas the city of Marion, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 33.3 million small businesses in the United States, which represent 99.9% of all businesses with employees in the United States. And whereas in 2023, US consumers reported spending an estimated $17 billion at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday, and whereas 75% of independent retailers polled have reported that holiday sales are critical to their ability to remain in business, and whereas the city of Marion supports our local businesses and recognizes their role in creating jobs, boosting our local economy and preserving our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the annual designation of the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Wasely, Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Marion, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
I just want to thank the council and also thank Rachel because every year Rachel intercepts an email from from the national organization, American Express, to celebrate this holiday, and she always says, hang on a second, I got to partner with our local economic development professionals. And so she reaches out to us and we coordinate this effort. So we really appreciate that. And then always we appreciate our city council, mayor, all of our employees at the city of Marion. We see their faces all the time, out and about, supporting small business, and we're just very thankful for that. This is an important time of year for our retailers. This is their largest, their largest time of year for sales, and it really supports them into the first quarter. So, and it's not just retail and restaurants. It's all of our service providers. You can buy gift cards to, for someone to get their haircut, or someone to get car washes, or really any of those service type of businesses are, fourth quarter is a big time for them too, so we want to remind everybody of that. And I also wanted to give some props to the city council. I was here on Tuesday when Marion Leadership in Action was doing their presentation for winter lights, and I know that you all have been working on getting the lights turned on a little bit earlier. I talked to Steve Jensen a little bit earlier today, and I want to thank you for getting those lights turned on earlier. It really creates a sense of place in our community, and people love it. It just, it, it gives people the itch to get shopping, but it is also the thing that when little kids are driving around with their parents in their cars, and they see that, that is a core childhood memory that they're going to have forever. And we just really appreciate all you do to support that effort. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a presentation of the Paul Draper Spirit of Marion Award. Kim?
I'm so excited to be here. Just to celebrate Mary Weber tonight. She, some of you, maybe she may have a very familiar face to you, and some of you may be someone you haven't met yet, but she is so worth meeting. She does such an amazing job and have enjoyed you as a person and as a professional in all the work that you do. So such an honor to share this Paul Draper Spirit Award with you tonight. So I'm gonna, and thank you, Rachel, for making it really big. This award recognizes the city employee who best represents dedication to public service, combined with an exceptional work ethic, humility, and a sense of humor, and a sincere desire to see our team and its individual members succeed. The award is named for a former city council member, Paul Draper. Draper was a great supporter of Marion's progress and a tireless advocate for the community for decades. For quarterly reach higher award recipients were eligible for consideration of the Spirit of Marion Award. The winner was determined by a vote of city employees and city council members. It's pretty cool, isn't it? In early May, Mary Weber was recognized for the 2024 Spirit of Marion Award winner. Congratulations again on that. Mary is our Park and Recreation Department's Horticulturist. She joined the city of Marion in July of 2020 and has been breathing new life into our community, gathering spaces ever since, and making them so beautiful. She is the creative mind behind the color combinations and the themes in the planters each year, and is a mentor to seasonal staff as they plant, water, weed, spray, and care for all of our city flower beds and planters, and there are many of them. Last year, Mary oversaw the installation of over 3,000 annual plants by staff and community volunteers, and initiated the Adopt a Flower Bed program to assist with weeding, planting, and mulching. Even more impressive, Marion and her team kept everything alive through the drought, beautifully alive. The planters and the hanging baskets in Uptown District became a great point of pride for the community. I don't think you could drive down Seventh Avenue without noticing them. Mary played a large part in achieving bird-friendly community status in 2021. It is an integral in planning Marion's migrating bird in Arbor Day celebration. Most recently, she was honored with the 2023 Marion Street, Main Street, Iowa Leadership Award during the Main Street Iowa Awards. Mary comes to work every day with a positive attitude and is always reaching higher in her work. Please join me and council mayor in congratulating you, Mary Weber, on the 2024 Paul Draper Spirit Marion Award winner.
It's an honor to be given this award by my peers and everybody within the city. It's just very humbling to know that everybody thinks highly of what I do and, and how well everything has looked over the last few years. And it's just so much fun to make Marion a more beautiful place for all of our residents and anybody visiting. We get lots of feedback and it's just, it's so much fun. So I'm very happy to be here and I work with a lot of great people.
One of our favorites.
Yeah. Come on up. Seth, do you want to?
Josie's been, yeah. Bring the baby.
Do you want to say, mom?
Mom.
Yeah, come on.
We'll see. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on with our agenda. The next item is a public forum, which is a time that's set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is on the agenda, but not part of a public hearing. There are two public forums. The first one is for items that is, items that are on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. And then the second forum is at the end of the meeting for any other comments from members of the public. We do have guidelines and rules for procedure related to the public forums. There are yellow comment cards at the end of the table. Please complete those and turn them in to the city clerk when you come forward to speak. If you have anything to hand out to the council, please submit those materials to the city clerk. Do not approach the dais. You're encouraged to state your name and any affiliation. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is imminently threatening, incites violence, or which is obscene. Please avoid repeating comments or points made by previous individuals who have addressed the council. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct that interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone's cooperation. At this time, we'll open the public forum for any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Anyone who's here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close that part of the meeting. Proceed to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E3, Resolutions 32163 through 32172.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes items A1 through E3, Resolutions 32163 through 32172. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next portion of the agenda, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items D1, Resolution Number 32173.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Wasely's abstention as follows. Item D1, which is Resolution 32173. Any discussion? No discussion. We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. Regular agenda. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-17, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 223-11 regarding nuisance abatement, and Chapter 313, Article 12 regarding automated traffic enforcement. Second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 24-17, amending various sections of the Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 2023, 223-11 regarding nuisance abatement, and Chapter 313, Article 12 regarding automated traffic enforcement. Any discussion? All those in favor of the second considerate, approving the second consideration of ordinance number 24-17, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-16, amending Chapter 24, Article 3 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding the fire department. This will be the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 24-16, amending Chapter 24, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the fire department. Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 24-16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-18, amending Chapter 313-10.10 and 313-10.11 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding snow routes and winter storm parking, and this is the second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 24-18, amending Chapter 313-10.10 and 313-10.11 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding snow routes and winter storm parking. Discussion?
We are getting this done just in time, aren't we? Snow is on the ground.
Any other, any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 24-18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 24-18 regarding snow routes and winter storm parking.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 24-18. Any discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules to proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 24-18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-18, amending Chapter 313-10.10 and 313-10.11 of the Marion Code and ordinances regarding snow routes and winter storm parking, and this would be the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 24-18. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the sanitary trunk sewer project number four and five. We have a presentation.
Yes, Your Honor. So projects four and five were part of the projects identified in the HGR report, and this is using our ARPA money that was allocated towards us. So the picture didn't come out very good, but this is basically south of Boyson along Central Avenue, and then along Indian Creek, south of Boyson, as it goes from the bridge at Central Northeast. So it goes both directions. It's replacing sewer that's not quite big enough, where this is a pinch point. So we're installing some 36-inch sanitary sewer. It also has some water main. And so with that, both water main, the, the water main department got $600,000 that was allocated towards it. And we also had some that was sanitary sewer that was put towards it. As this project came in really well, it only came in at $2,947,643.46 from Boomerang, which was only 68.8% of the engineer's estimate. And because we have to have all of our ARPA money under obligation by the end of this year, we lose it, we will be working with the contractor to do a change order to bring that back to city council for consideration. So we utilize as much of that money as possible. Otherwise, we have to give it back to the state.
Meaning that we'll get more done for that money?
Yep. So we'll have some unit prices that we already have based on the bids, and we'll negotiate that with them if there's some things that are not in there as unit prices. But we have a meeting with them to talk about it, assuming this is approved tonight. But we are recommending moving forward with this. It does have a couple milestones because of some work in there. And so it has a late start date of 3/31/25, 175 working days. Has liquidated damages of $1,500 per working day for the first milestone, and then for the second milestone of completing the project of August 11th of '25. And again, if we add scope to that, those dates might change to give them time to build more sewer. But again, using some different scenarios, we'll look and see how best to utilize that money so that it goes towards that sanitary sewer project. But staff is recommending proceeding with the plans and with the bids.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, please come forward, either in favor or in opposition. Please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if we've received comments outside this meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not.
Please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the sanitary trunk sewer project four and five as follows. Resolutions 32174 to 32175.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve project calendar for the sanitary trunk sewer projects numbers four and five, including Resolutions 32174 through 32175. Discussion? Steve?
Question, Mike. How much of this project is related to ARPA money?
All of it.
100% of it?
Yes.
So between us and Cedar Rapids, we designate or who all is involved in this besides Marion?
Only Marion.
So this is only, all this is in Marion now by that map?
There's no cost sharing on this one.
No cost sharing at all. So 100% of this is, so we designated the entire amount for this project out of, previously out of ARPA.
And then the bids came in.
Significantly lower.
Yep.
Well, quite a, quite a challenge to deal with. Good luck on that.
Good challenge to have.
I like, I like having that issue to deal with and the reverse. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
So what was the total ARPA allocation to this project?
Just off the top of my head, I'd say 3.125. Is close to that amount.
The project's 14.
Okay. So I think the point of this, though, is given the 68.8% best bid that we had received, we've got, we've got additional monies for emergent scope that's identified as the work is being done, correct?
Correct. The only thing that's complicated is there is some ways that we can put contingencies in there, but to make it more correct, we need to do it so that it's under contract. So that's why we will amend the contract with a change order to add additional quantities to it.
Okay, all right. But we have, we have the financial buffer to deal with that emergent scope should it materialize.
Correct. We even have $250,000 allocated in local option sales tax. That was originally supposed to go towards the project, but both this project and the one that we're doing in One empty Park both came in well under. So it's a good problem to have, but we'll sort it out.
So just a follow-up. So now that I, so the total ARPA dollars is 3.1 million?
Well, the total ARPA was 6 million plus.
But how much for this project?
I don't know if we even found it or.
So I mean, are you, are we trying to get up, you talked about 3.1 million. Are we trying to get the scope of this up to 3.1 million? Or 3, 4.2?
We're going to get it up so that we utilize as much of the ARPA money as possible. So some of that, you know, we're not going to end partway between manholes. We're going to go manhole to manhole. So we may dip into the local option sales tax that's also allocated. So just trust that we're going to work through the system and figure out and use that total amount.
So it's a real, really what we're looking at, maybe increasing the scope of it and reallocating the resources and where they're coming from?
It would be decreasing local option sales tax and.
Yes, okay.
I mean, that money was already allocated towards sanitary and water main. All we're doing is being able to build more sanitary and water main with the money that we had allocated.
I just wanted to clarify if I could. On the ARPA spending plan, we had 3.51 million allocated to sanitary sewer on the city's behalf, but then also 600,000 towards water infrastructure. Both of those are to be used in this project. So it's just over 4 million. And we do have to have all of these dollars obligated by December 31st. So when he's talking about bringing back a scope change that has to occur by December 31st in order to consider those dollars obligated.
Gotcha. All right. We'll, we'll hear more later. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? We will vote. All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the sanitary trunk sewer projects number four and five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding 16th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project. We have a presentation, please.
Yep. So this one's a little smaller of a project. To give you some bearings, 10th Street is this north-south street here, and 16th Street, or 16th Avenue. Basically, this is a sewer that goes between some houses that's really flat, and we've had Public Works goes out there about once a month to try and jet that to keep the line clean. There's only about four houses that are on this line, but it's a continuous maintenance issue. So we're going to come in there. We've got easements from the property owners to go in there and relay this main and get it so that actually flows. So it's a fairly smaller project. So for this one, the low bid was from Rachi Construction at $71,394, which was 83% of the engineer's estimate, and this is just coming out of our general sanitary sewer funds. Has a late start date of 5/7/25, 25 working days and $300 per day. And we are recommending proceeding with the plans and the bid and contract on this one.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on this matter. If anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward at this time. And we'll ask the staff if we've received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not.
Please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Proceed to the motion.
Mayor, move to approve project calendar regarding the 16th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project as follows. This will be Resolutions 32176 through 32177.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 16th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, including Resolutions 32176 through 32177. Any discussion? Questions for Mike? None? Okay, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 16th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding Oakshade Cemetery Crypt Wall Repair Project. Mike, are you doing this, me too?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So this one is to repair the existing face of the wall of the crypt that's starting to lean and is becoming an issue out there. And so we're trying to get ahead of it before it comes down. So we did put this out to bid. You can see the condition of the walls is not the best out there. If you haven't been out there in person, this is the rendering of what it was going to look like after it was reconstructed. It did go out for bids. It only received one bid from Rachi Construction at 151.8% of the engineer's estimate at 4/38/750. Has a late start date of 5/27/25, completion of 9/26/25, and liquidated damages of $300 per day. In this case, staff is recommending that we reject bids so that we can do a meeting to value engineer and determine. to value engineer and determine if there's some items that we can change or modify to make it more within the budget that was allocated, or if we need to look at other options based on that conversation that we can have with the contractors and all of the plan holders that had plans that pulled it to potentially bid on this project. So again, we're recommending denial of the next item, but we still have the public hearing portion of it.
Okay, thank you. If anyone's here to address counsel on this matter, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. We'll ask the staff if they've received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not.
Okay, please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing. Proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding the twenty-twenty-four Oak Shade Cemetery Crypt Wall Repair Project as follows. This will include, include resolution numbers three-two-one-seven-eight and three-two-one-seven-nine.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the twenty-twenty-four Oak Shade Cemetery Crypt Wall Repair Project. Discussion? Steve?
Yeah, Mike, have we, and I know there's other alternatives, if we did, if we did not rebuild that and we were to look at alternative B to make that kind of a regular cemetery situation, have we looked at the details of what would be involved with that? I mean, I don't know how many caskets are in the crypts or anything else like that. Have we looked at any details beyond just rebuilding the crypt wall?
This is Plan A.
Yep, what's Plan B?
There's different options, so...
So we could either take, take those remains, because we do have the court order, then we could bury them in the cemetery as a traditional burial. Once we could do that, we could remove the crypts and then just make it an earthen hill just like it is on the surrounding area, or we could just build, demolish the crypts, do traditional burials, and then build a facade, so build a wall, just a traditional wall, and then they wouldn't have to build, build around the crypts, and that'd be less complicated, less, less risk on the contractor's part, and possibly cheaper. So those are all options, but we need to discuss those with the contractor so that, and our architect, so that way we can get some real numbers.
Just out of curiosity, I assume we know how many are buried in those crypts? If they're in those crypts, are they in a casket only if they're in a crypt?
They are in a vault, so they're in a casket and then a vault.
A casket, yeah, in a casket in the vault?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I got, okay, thanks.
Yep.
We heard a little bit about this on Tuesday, but I just want to reiterate the age of most that are, when most of these burials occurred in the crypt, it was in the late eighteen hundreds, is that what we heard?
The early nineteen...
The early nineteen hundreds?
So they started in the late eighteen hundreds in the first one, and then they went, I think, all the way to the nineteen forties to the, to the last one. So they were built in stages, and so the wall is not, not consistent throughout, so it starts as a thicker limestone material farther to the south, and then gets more of a traditional block wall as it goes north, and that's where we're seeing most of the failing is towards the north, and then less failing towards the south.
And do we know if there's family of anybody buried there in the community that we've talked to about her?
We actually, oh, go ahead, Kara.
Your honor, I can field this one. That's actually why we had to go and get a court order. We did research the family lines and were unable to find any living relatives for any of the burials.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that information. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, do we know, was there any kind of charitable or philanthropy, I can't say the word, contribution that was, that, that funded the construction of the crypt? Is there anything special about how that was funded that we need to reference, any record of how that was done? I'm just trying to think of what, what the city's obligation from its origin was to maintain it, and perhaps in this case, repair or replace.
Your honor, the best determination we can make on that issue is that the, the crypts were purchased privately by the parties who are buried in them.
Okay.
And there's, we have found no records of any sort of trust for the maintenance thereof or anything like that.
I, I knew you'd say it all better than I was thinking it, thank you, okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the twenty-twenty-four Oak Shade Cemetery Crypt Wall Repair Project, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The motion is defeated.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash nineteen, approving a request to rezone property from UTC one, Urban Transitional Commercial one, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, for property located at eight oh one Tenth Street in Marion, Iowa. This is on behalf of Hawth Properties LLC. This is our second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of the request to rezone the property at eight oh one Tenth Street from Urban Transitional Commercial to Planned Unit Development. Discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, do we have any sense of the timing that this project will proceed under?
We'll have the final readings at the December fifth meeting. I suspect they'll be submitting building permit applications mid-late December, possibly into the first of the new year for construction, spring of twenty twenty-five, as I can get in.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-four dash nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty, approving amendments to chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions, parking and loading regulations, landscape and screening standards, and accessory structure setbacks, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty, approving amendments to chapter three forty of the Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions, parking and location, loading regulations, landscape and screening standards, and accessory structure setbacks. Discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public forum, for the time set aside from members, from comments, for members of the public who is here to address the council, please come forward at this time.
I know you guys hate to see me again, but I'm back, and I'm on to you, and I have a lot of information, especially you, mayor, of what you guys are involved with. Chad Pelley, give him tens of millions of dollars, and you know who he is? He's one of the worst criminals that I've seen, and I know you guys are probably just equally as guilty on many other things as him. Did you know Chad Pelley gang raped a fifteen-year-old child? Did you know that? He was charged with felony gang rape of a fifteen-year-old child, which he pled guilty to a lesser charge. But hey, that's cool, let's give him tens of millions of our money, let's just do that, that's cool. What else did he do? Well, he served two years in prison for that. After prison, this sick predator and child enthusiast kicked and punched women in the face. He also choked a woman, and he pled guilty, what do you know? He pled guilty to all of these crimes. Tens of millions of dollars are the taxpayers, just their money going to a sick criminal. What is wrong with you? Pelley, Chad Pelley, he serves on the Marion Visioning Committee with you, mayor. Uh-oh, you know all about his crimes, but yet you still work side by side with them. You approve tens of millions of dollars to go to this sick weirdo, but yet diddling kids is just fine, apparently, and beating women, hey, that's cool too, isn't it? Because he wouldn't be on here, because I, I have some information that ties it all together, ties it all together, and you guys are going to get exposed. Let's see, that's Sarah Minzer, but where's Will Brandt? Which one of you is Will? Oh, of course he's not here, where the hell did Will go? But yeah, he's on the committee with you, mayor, and Will, and I know a lot of things about you guys, and you're about to get extremely exposed. Remember the last time I was here? Well, I think about a hundred and eighty-five thousand people watched the video I dropped on that, and guess what? I'm going to keep doing it until at least one million more people wake up and see the corruption you all are involved with, because you guys are sick, sick as hell. Oh, let's, let's go get a child predator, let's go get a woman beater, and let's give them all the tax money for these projects, because that's what you're doing, mayor, and you know it. You're sick, you're a disgrace. And another thing, did any one of you here actually learn jack shit about the oath that you swore to the Constitution? Remember last time you raised your hand? Oh, I'm going to solemnly swear to defend the Constitution, but yet none of you knows jack shit about the Constitution, huh? Why is that? You know this is America, the supposed land of the free, and it's not because of criminals like this guy, Mike the Cuck, Kitzmiller? Criminal. You know what he said? He said that he would go ahead and arrest people, he doesn't care if it's right or wrong, he'll let the courts decide, Mike, but I'm back, buddy, and it's coming, buddy, it's coming. Justice is coming. You're going to be just squirming like you were last time. One million people will get to watch you, Mike, one million. Same with you, mayor, and I'm thinking, maybe I should just be up here next time. Maybe that's what needs to be done, maybe I need to be sitting up here, because you guys are all criminals, disgraceful criminals involved with just disgraceful things. Chad Pelley, what is wrong with you? Would you like to say anything, mayor? Because I'm going to expose it all, buddy.
You have one minute remaining.
I'm going to expose it all. Well, just wait, because this video, yeah, it's going to get a pretty good chunk of views, because I'm going to wake the people up and the people of Marion, and I'm going to go door to door in Marion, and I'm going to tell them about you criminals, what you like, what you give money to, how you, I'm not going to reveal it all right now, but I have sick information on you guys, especially you, Mike. This guy right here, Turtlehead, he is a beyond disgrace, but just wait, Mike, it's coming, buddy, it's coming. Now, I'll say, I'll end here with this, fuck all of you, fuck you, especially you, Mike, fuck you. You guys are cucks, I'm out of here, but don't worry, we're, we're always watching, we are always watching. At least this time, mayor, you at least let me use my First Amendment right that you tried stripping me last time. Go fuck yourself, bitch. Audio.
Anyone here to also address counsel, please come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting, proceed to council comments. Mr. Nett?
Just wanted, whoops, just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Hard to believe it's this time of year again, but happy holidays.
Thank the team who's been working out in this wind and cold, and whether it was the collection the last couple of days, or those that are out with the plaza, this can't be on our easy, but we appreciate everything that's going on to make that happen, and remind everybody about the proclamation earlier and Small Business Saturday, because that is important for the community and a lot of our local business owners.
Okay.
Want to tag on to what Randy said, wish everybody a great Thanksgiving, and if you happen to be traveling, please have safe travels.
Steve? Okay, with that, we have a closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I and section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, three separate items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under the Code of Iowa. And we have the city attorney's statement, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Sections twenty-one point five one J and twenty-one point five one C.
Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskaman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, we've adjourned to closed session. Thank you.